Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? This is Frank.
Yep, we can hear you.
We can. Got, I see Chris and Josh, Matt, Robin, Lisa, passive band, which is also probably Roger as well. And Joe Pasqual, Joe DiTillo, Janet Morganti, several people. Wow, lots of people coming in now. All right, we'll give everyone just a minute to come in and then we'll go through a little preliminary information here. All right, so for tonight's planning and zoning commission meeting, what we want to do is use the, as much as we can, the raise hand tool. If you are live on camera and you raise your hand, we will see you as well, so that works also. With that, we'll call this meeting to order of the Town of Durham Planning and Zoning Commission. It is Wednesday, May 6th, 2020 at 7:30 PM. And we are holding this meeting by Zoom. It's a remote teleconference media platform. And with that, let's see if we can have a roll call with Jen. Would you be so kind?
I don't see her on there, Frank.
I didn't see her either, Frank.
All right. With that, I guess what we'll do then is I'll just ask that each, oh, hold on, I've got a buzzing noise here. This could be Jen.
It is. She says she's having trouble getting into the meeting.
Oh. Is there a limit on the number of people, Robin, or no?
There is not. We have a paid subscription, so no.
Okay. All right, so why don't we do this? Let's we'll just have the participants that are here tonight call out their name and then we'll, when Jen comes in, we'll we'll update her on what's happened. So, let's see. Frank DeFelice is present.
Josh Edinger.
Josh Edinger.
Chris Mailey.
Chris Mailey, okay. Matt Thompson.
Matt Thompson's here.
Okay.
Joe Pasqual.
Joe Pasqual.
George Rubner.
All right, this is for the commission members. Okay, so John D'Nazio, I see you there.
Yes, hello.
Okay, you're there. All right, other commission members? We can, yes.
Okay.
Other commission members? Robin, do you have Dick Erickson?
I do not see him. No, I don't see him.
All right, let's see. Matt, okay. All right, so I guess we're going to be seating some alternates. John, you're an alternate, right?
Correct.
And so I think you could sit for, who do we have here? I think you could sit for Dick Erickson, I believe.
Okay, I'm off the bench.
Off the bench, yeah, unless Dick comes in. Sometimes he does. All right, are there any other alternates that we need to see? Okay, so then, Robin, we have a quorum. We're good?
Uh, yep, it looks like it.
All right, and if there's any other members that come in, we'll
Jen's coming in now. She's joining now.
All right, we'll just, we'll wait for her for a second.
Sorry?
Are you there? Hello, okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
We missed you. All right, so Jen, we right now, as it stands, we have Chris Belay here, Frank, Josh, Matt Thompson, Joe Pasqual. John D'Nazio is seated for Dick Erickson. And I'm not sure if we have any other members on right now. I don't see any others, so we do have a a quorum, so we can proceed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none? A motion to approve the agenda would be in order?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion made by Joe Pasqual.
I'll second that.
Second is Matt?
That you? Doesn't matter.
Okay, all right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? I declare the motion passed. All right, with that, that brings us to the public comment section of our meeting. Public comment is welcome. However, there are two public, well, there's actually a public hearing and an application tonight. If your comments are for either the application or the public hearing, would be appropriate to mention that the, the public hearing comments have to be entered during the public hearing, so we will take testimony for that then. Are there any public comments?
Um, if I may add one thing, Frank, I'm sorry, Roger.
Go ahead, Roger. We're in public comment.
Um, Dick Porter is trying to join the meeting and is having trouble, so if you could give him a couple minutes to catch up before we get to the discussion on wineries, cideries, and breweries.
Well, there'll be public comment during that. That'll be permitted then, so that'd be appropriate for him.
You got it. And if I could also say hi to our new neighbors, Richard and Manya, it's good to join them.
All right, with that, we will move to item number, first of all, let me just ask, is there any other public comment? If not, we will move to item number seven on tonight's agenda, which is Tilcon Incorporated Renewal of Excavation and Removal Permit, Wallingford Road. We have a representative from Tilcon that will be presenting. Robin, do you know if we have anyone from Tilcon that was going to participate?
So, yeah, there was a gentleman. Let me just look through my email real quick. We told him about it, so I assume he was going to be on. Jen, do you remember his name? It was
I spoke with him yesterday. And he was concerned about being able to get on. I gave him my number to call me if he was having issues trying to sign in. I haven't heard from him as of yet, but so I'm not sure what happened.
All right.
I have, I have a number for Tilcon. I have a number listed on his email, Frank. I can mute and try to call him if you'd like.
Yeah, that'll be fine. We'll just give you a minute to do that before we move on. So while Robin is doing that, let me just take this opportunity to say, first of all, welcome to the guests that are not usually at our meetings. We're glad to have you. And secondly, if you go down the bottom of your screen, you'll see a selection that says participants. And if you collect that, you will see along the right-hand side of your screen, your ability to mute your microphone and your ability to raise your hand. When you click the raise your hand button on the right side of the screen, lower right-hand corner, you will also, it'll flip and it'll, it'll say lower hand, so that you can lower it when you're done. That's what we're going to use for the public hearing tonight, once we get started.
Frank?
Yes.
I'm sorry to break in, but you can't get into your meeting through Zoom. You have to go into the phone. It's not allowing people in. It says authorized only participants.
Problem I had.
I'm sorry, what was that, Jen?
That was the problem I was having.
All right, I mean, we have a lot of people here that don't normally dial in, so I'm not sure how they're getting in.
It only works if you have a Zoom account created.
We can get, this is Cheryl. We're getting in through Facebook.
Oh, I didn't know you could do that.
Or push your phone, Frank. It's not allowing you into the Zoom.
Frank, this is Joe. When I talked to Alicia last week about setting up our ag commission on Zoom, there were, they were in the process of making changes so that only participants in the meeting could call in and have video. Everybody else that was going to participate could only have audio. So that may be part of the changes that they implemented last week.
Wow, if that's possible. All right, we'll ask Robin when she gets off the phone here.
Yeah, I believe they took out a different license.
Robin, can you hear me?
I can, Frank. I'm on the phone with Chris. He's logging back in. He was on here, but we, he could hear us, but we couldn't hear him.
All right, okay. We also need to find out about, there's an issue possibly of being able to access through, only through phone. Is that, is that true?
Access what only through phone?
The Zoom meeting, one of the attendants, the attendees mentioned that you have to call in.
I don't know. I didn't call in.
Okay.
Are you on, Chris? Let me find you. Hold on.
Yeah.
All right, so
In order to access the meeting, you have to have a Zoom account. You don't have an account, it won't let you in. You can't just use the meeting ID to get through.
Okay. I can, I can see your video, but I can't authorize users in my settings. All right, so, Chris, I'm gonna hang up with you. I'll call you back if I need to try to figure this out. Hold on one second, yep. Okay, so they've been doing updates to Zoom, so I don't know if that's what this is. And I don't know that I can change anything when we're in a meeting.
All right, so let me ask you, is it, this, Chris, is this the fellow from Tilcon?
Tilcon.
Yep, so he's, he's on, but we can't hear him for some reason.
All right. How do you wish to proceed, Robin?
It's a good question.
If Chris, can Chris call in?
He could probably call. He had called in before, but we still couldn't hear him. Chris, if you can hear us, do you want to try calling in?
Hey, not to add my two cents, but obviously if attendees cannot get into this meeting, or pardon me, authorized attendees, therefore there is no public.
I mean, we have almost 40 people on, so there's public on.
Okay, well, there's 6,000 people, if not 7,000, in the town of Durham, so I guess I would question the fact of having a meeting, a public meeting, without those people being allowed to be at the meeting.
I just, I, oops, did I raise my hand?
Yeah.
I just came on through my other Zoom account and was able to get in, no problem.
All right, so I guess that people can call in. That works, is that right, Robin?
I'm, I'm guessing that's how people are getting on. I mean,
Can, can someone verify if you can hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Robin, I have a question. This is Lindsay Hertz. Do you have the dial-in information? I'm looking on the town website, and I know there's just the link and the meeting ID and the password, but there's usually a dial-in that also accompanies the Zoom meeting when you create it.
The dial-in meeting is on the agenda.
Okay, so I can go to the agenda and find it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so then, if Chris is, Chris, can you hear us? Can you speak? If you can't get through, would you like to call?
Hold on, I think he might have just come in. Chris, can you hear us? I just saw his number.
I see his face on the screen, but I cannot hear anything that he's saying.
He can put up note cards.
Chris?
This is like being in a Dilbert cartoon.
Is that, Chris, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, there we got him.
Okay, so we got him by telephone and we got him. All right, so Chris, item number seven, Tilcon Renewal of Excavation and Removal Permit, Wallingford Road. Go ahead and present your case.
Okay, my, my name's Chris Passo. I'm the Environmental Land Manager for Tilcon. I'm here representing Tilcon for their annual query permit. As you can see, I know you've guys seen the plans, there's not much difference from last year. Last year, we were giving 1.1 million tons. This is a little over 1.2 million. Same locations, typically 370 elevation and 230 elevation. The only difference this year is we're doing more at the 230, about half of the excavation, and we have the 230 level, which will push us farther back to a future sedimentation base. Other than that, it's pretty close to last year.
All right, any other, any other presentation materials you want to present?
Uh, no, I think that's, that's pretty much the whole thing.
Okay, and Robin, these were on, posted on the website?
Yep, it was posted on the website.
Very good, all right. With that, we'll open it up to members of the commission. Any members of the commission have questions for Mr. Castillo? I do not see, oh, I do see a hand, John, Josh Ediger. Go ahead, Josh.
I guess my question was just around whether you guys actually did do the, I forgot now, if it's 1.1 million or 2.1 million cubic yards that you were anticipating last year, or whether you're under or over that number that was your estimate?
We were pretty close to that estimate. I don't know the exact number, but we were pretty close to it.
Okay.
Other commissioners having questions? All right. All right, if there are no further questions of the commission members, a motion would be in order.
This is Chris. I move, we approve the application.
Motion's been made by Chris that we move the application. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the application of Tilcon for a renewal of excavation and removal permit, Wallingford Road?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Abstaining? I declare the motion passed. All right, and Jen, you have, you have the tally there? Jen?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay, good. All right, very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in tonight. I know it's a little difficult with this remote stuff, but we're grateful that we could, we could get that done for you.
No, thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to, actually, do we need to wait till late? No, we do not, so we can start right in. We'll move to our public hearing, which is the adoption of the draft regulations for farm breweries, cideries, wineries, and distilleries. And there are a number of documents that were presented on this application. Some previously that we, the commission members and the public have been, have seen. We've got some new ones in, and so I'm going to start by going through some of the written comments, and then we'll take public comment and go to the commission members as well.
Excuse me, Frank?
Yes.
We need a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
Very well, so is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Joe. Is there a second?
Crystal, second.
Press the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? I declare the motion passed. All right, with that, so let me go through this. We have some materials here. The first is a letter from Lindsay Hertzic. Lindsay Yeoman-Hertzman. And basically, this is a letter that she sent in to the commission. And her comments are as follows. I'll read the letter. "In summary, we must be cautious so that we, as a town, know what the outcome is going to be. The regulations must be updated to include specifics. There currently are far too many holes and room for guessing. The regulations cannot be left on a case-by-case basis. Doing that defeats the purpose of the regulations. 10 acres is too small and should be increased. Some examples of items that must be expanded upon are clearly and clearly defined are light, lighting, height of poles, number of events allowed per week, number of events allowed per weekend, maximum hours of operation, maximum capacity for onsite, building design limitations, crops must be grown onsite in order to maintain the agricultural slash farm atmosphere. There must be a set percentage of crops produced on the premises that should be specified at no less than 25%. How would this be regulated? Following state guidelines is not optimal, as the state could be charging, changing regulations much more frequently than Durham. Durham should have its own regulations to maintain our quality of life, our quality of living and integrity. Premises should be on a through road, for example, not a cul-de-sac, no through-traffic roads. Suggestions, compose a site map to gain a solid understanding of all parcels in town that would fit into a specific regulation, for example, 10-acre, 15-acre, and 5-acre parcels. Do not rush the approval of these regulations. It's extremely important to vet properly and not to react to the interest of several parties. Must specify property setbacks, any grandfathering end." Second letter I will read is from Cheryl Salva. "A few thoughts. Residential areas, special permit required case-by-case basis. This will allow residents to voice their thoughts. Commercial areas, general permit, agricultural land, 10-acre minimum. 14.6.5 application requirements, the type of lighting and the height of poles should be considered as not to spill over into the residential areas nearby. In the past, we have had problems with football field and decorative lights on Main Street. Agreeing on what W/B expectable. Signage. It appears that they're going to allow one sign, which I understand the reasoning, but they may need more signs than that. I think we may need to break this down a bit and ask what potentially could be needed in this arena to avoid issues down the road. Also, is there going to be a sign on Route 17 directing people to the venue? Events. Even though this is a case-by-case basis, concert, a conversation should be had as to what will and what will not be accepted. What are the expectations of the businessperson in the arena? Should, all should be transparent and have no surprises. These types of anticipated events should be in their business plan to the best of their knowledge. Traffic control. During events, are these going to be required to have a police officer if needed? Buildings and tents, design location. Is there going to be any upfront discussion as to what will be approved tonight or setbacks? Hour of operation, what will be approved, what will be accepted, keeping in mind the known standards must be adhered to. Full transparency with all involved is important to know what we will and will not be request and/or accepted. Finally, Cheryl Salva." Next letter is from Warren Hertzic. "Good morning, Robin. After the public hearing ended, the commission voted to continue the hearing. Several issues were brought up, and I was wondering what this, what was decided. One, it was suggested that other town regulations been reviewed and they be discussed with staff in terms of what worked and what changes would be made. Is this going to be done? Two, will the commission forward the proposed regulations to the Durham Economic Development Commission and Agricultural Commission for comment? Three, there was some discussion during this hearing on reduced minimum acreage. Is the commission considering this? Four, an earlier version of the proposed regulations had dimensional requirements. Have they been dropped? Five, there were comments made about defining some things in particular with a portion and a farm cafe. Will the commission consider adding definitions? Six, I can appreciate that each application will be different and each site its own attributes, but I think it would be somewhat concerned by a case-by-case review without more specifics. I think an applicant may also find this hard. Thank you for inviting me to comment. Should you be, should you talk to me about my questions, I can be reached. Thank you." That's Warren Hertzic. Next, we have a letter from the Durham Agricultural Commission, and the same letter was submitted by Jesse Allen. "To whom it may concern, first and foremost, the agricultural commission fully supports the regulation of allowing wineries, distilleries, breweries, and cideries in the town of Durham. This type of business further solidifies the town's stance on maintaining a strong agricultural community while also looking in to, looking for new avenues to improve the economic development of the town. The ag commission would like to offer the following recommendations in the next revision, next version of the draft regulations. One, motion passed to increase minimum acreage from five acres to 25 acres. Reasons for increase includes the following. There are approximately 172 5- to 10-acre lots in Durham. The volume of eligible properties is significant enough where the type of business this regulation is allowing will likely cause disruption to surrounding properties, neighborhoods, and other business. The ag commission's opinion is that although the public and commission are accepting of this type of business in Durham, they are not accepting to the point of having this large number of eligible properties. This, the magnitude of eligible properties will statistically increase the risk of compliant litigation, litigation expense, disruption to normal planning and zoning matters. 25 acres provides enough property to adequately buffer neighboring properties as well as to allow this type of business, breweries, wineries, et cetera, to thrive, i.e. enough acreage for growing production events. Future adjustments to minimum acreage requirements are significantly easier to decrease than increase. Two, motion passed to include discreet language related to property setbacks. One of the largest risks associated with the type of business will be surrounding property complaints. As such, the ag commission feels it is necessary to make the setback language much more robust rather than stating setbacks may be increased. As the town continues to evolve to find ways to improve economic development, we will also need to find ways to evolve the setback buffer requirement and not rely on prior regulations. Consider a mandatory requirement of an A2 survey. Three, the following were offered as recommendations, however, no motions were brought forth. Include language related to type of music events that will be allowed inside or versus outside. Potentially put in line, in, put a line in similar to the food truck of 14.6.4 for music events. Music events have a high likelihood of causing disruption to the surrounding properties. Provide more direct stance on hours of operation versus allowing owners to set. The ag commission feels that this type of business needs to have a consistent set of hours for all businesses included in the regulation. Consistent hours allows the town to more easily manage the entirety versus case by case. Clarify language related to growing crops in conjunction with another property. The ag commission wants to be certain that both properties in this situation are working farms. Section 2.0 definitions, working farm change crop production to agricultural production. In conclusion, we want to thank the P&amp;Z Commission for the opportunity to provide input. Collaboration between commissions allows for well-rounded and well-thought final product. The ag commission would be more than happy to meet with planning and zoning to discuss the aforementioned recommendations. Thank you, Durham Agricultural Commission." The next letter will come from Michael Damato, who is the zoning enforcement officer for the town of Clinton. And this is in response to a request for information from Robin. "Hi, Robin. I've spent some time going through the file for this property. This is a specific property Robin was requiring about. To provide a bit of background, in 2013, the vineyard went to the Planning and Zoning Commission to upgrade the existing onsite pistro to a more traditional restaurant with expanded hours of operation. That application was approved by the P&amp;Z and supported by the abutting property owners during the public hearing. Over the last 10 years, there, or so, there have been a few different people tasked with zoning enforcement in Clinton. But in my review of the property file, there have been no recent complaints and or violations. Overall, they are a great asset to Clinton. Please let me know if you have further questions, Michael Damato." Next letter is from Josh Edinger. "Hi, Robin. I wanted to provide a bit more feedback on a few sections based on my thinking and some of the comments we received at the last public hearing. In the survey, I did suggest that the reg move to five acres and to define the farm cafe, but here are some more thoughts. Cafe definition. I am not precisely sure of what the definition should be, but defining it as being subordinate to both the farm and tasting room is probably the direction I would go. I'm in favor of having some sort of farm-to-table restaurant regulation that might I'm in favor of having some sort of farm-to-table restaurant regulation that might share common elements with this regulation, but I don't think we're ready to bite that off yet, so it makes no sense for it to be clear that the cafe is not a restaurant. So I think it makes sense to be clear that the cafe is not a restaurant. And then purpose and description, I am not much of a writer, but here's a stab at expanding the description. This is intended mostly to be illustrative of point, but I think we should be included. The intent of this regulation is to allow for economic diversity and sustainability of agricultural uses and to preserve the agricultural activities while protecting neighboring property owners from possible disruptions caused by agritourism activities. These uses are permitted as accessory uses to an agricultural operation and should remain subordinate and incidental to the primary agricultural use. The regulation in no way is intended to limit the growing, production or distributing of agricultural products, including beer, cider, wine or liquor, as allowed under Connecticut, Connecticut General Statute, section 1.1, 1-1Q. Standards, I think we should make a reference to the Connecticut General Standards. Connecticut General Statute standards that need to be met and proved to the CGS number. Just some thoughts for you and the board's consideration. Thank you, Josh Edner. The next letter is from Janet Morganti. Janet is the, I think, the chair of the Economic Development Commission. This is to Robin Newton and the Planning and Zoning Members dated April 28, 2020. Dear, I agree with the recommendations made by River Cog's Senior Planner, Megan Jofless, as well as Walter Adamant's Chair of the Regional Agricultural Commission, that 10 acres is too restrictive. I would propose changing it to not less than five acres. It should be relative to how big the operation will be. Large tasting room with small heated tent, room for parking, et cetera. I would also go along with the Connecticut State Regulations that 25% of the grapes need to be grown in Connecticut, not specifically in Durham. Maybe a percentage of acreage should be devoted to growing area instead of a percentage of product. Again, this would be relative to the acreage of the property. It was suggested by Megan Jofless to look into O-Lime's Regulations. I would like to know what it is. If we want this to work, we have to, we have people set up shop in Durham. I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat that. If we want this to work and have people set up shop in Durham, we need to be less restrictive on certain things. In order to prevent issues with neighboring residential neighbors, specific language for noise, outdoor lighting, onsite food, setbacks and public facilities should be added. I recommend considering establishing, established language from the Connecticut Regulations and surrounding towns. See what works for them. While I wish the regulation was already in place, we don't want to rush into anything. Careful consideration is necessary for the welfare of the residents as well as the potential business owners. Thank you, Janet Morganti. All right, the next letter we have is from Ashley Muck, I'm a, Muck, Muck Jorkowski, and she is a land use administrator in the town of Portland. And this is in response to questions that Robin had, and her response back is as follows. Good afternoon, Ms. Newton. We have not had any problems with our existing wineries that would have prompted a tax amendment. The change was prompted by the Economic Development Commission. They asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider the change due to increased in interest in brew pubs and breweries. As far as how many wineries and brewers we have, I will defer to our Economic Development Coordinator, Mary Dickinson, copied on this email as she maintains our business list. And I don't have anything from Mary Dickinson. So I don't think she responded.
She didn't respond, Frank.
Thank you very much, Robin. All right, then I have, let's see, well, this is a review by the Regional Agricultural Commission for River Cog, and this is a review of the draft regulations. Dear Mr. D. Felice, the Planning and Zoning Commission has submitted the draft regulations for farm breweries, cideries and distilleries to River Cog for review. Being that the regulations pertaining to agriculture, River Cog has included the Regional Agricultural Commission, making them aware of the draft regulations. At their meeting of March 19, 2020, Regional Agricultural Commission meeting, the draft regulations were added to the agenda. Comments are as follows. Section two, definitions. Farm brewery, cideri, winery and distillery. The definitions say a production facility, provided that it is located on a parcel of land that is part of a working farm on a minimum of 10 acres. Please do not require a minimum number of acres. The required number of acres is, is scale-related to the size of the operation. If an operation is small, it would not require 10 acres to run. Requiring a small-scale, existing production farm with an accessory use to 10 acres is too restrictive and should have no bearing on what the found produces. A lot of food can be grown on a small amount of land and processed into value-added product. With a proper layout, there should be enough space on a smaller plot for adequate parking, tasting, sales, pedestrian areas, et cetera. Planning and zoning has the opportunity to review the business plan, which includes a site plan to, for approval to determine if the space is allowable or not. The acreage requirement is a problem if a farmer has some land in Durham and other land in another town. Would the acreage for the other town be included in the amount? Farmers often have land in different towns and acreage that is not in a single plot. Farmers may have a number of plots that are not adjoining properties. Requiring a single 10-acre plot in Durham is too restrictive. Do not require, please do not require a minimum number of acreage. B, the definition says where a portion of the ingredients are grown onsite. Please consider that a portion is not specific enough. How would a farmer know how much to plant if a portion is required? How would planning and zoning have the authority for enforcement if it's not more specific? A recommendation is that a percentage requirement be made by planning and zoning. A percentage requirement would protect local farmers that might otherwise be abused by commercial enterprise. Things to consider. The required percentage be at least as much as what the state of Connecticut requires in statute. The state requirements change as it should to evolve with new ideas and products. Don't restrict Durham's farmers with regulations that don't evolve with change. Please consider how the percentage will allow for growth. Also remember that Durham grown is a difficult requirement. The narrow source of supply in Durham is not always reasonable. Restricting Durham farmers to Connecticut grown as opposed to Durham grown is more economical. A better solution is if some percentage of the ingredients were to be grown in Durham and other percentage be supplemented with other local farms. C, the definition says a working farm. What is a working farm? More clarification would help to mitigate any misuse that might occur. Section 121401, description and purpose, there were some questions about this description. We suggest that 121402 be added to the description and to know if these uses are allowed as accessory uses. The intent of the regulation is to allow for economic diversity and sustainability of agricultural uses and to preserve agricultural activities. These uses are permitted as accessory uses in 121402 to an agricultural operation and should be remained subordinate and incidental to the primary agricultural use. 121402 permitted accessory uses, item number six, one of the permitted uses is a farm cafe. What is a farm cafe? More clarification would help mitigate any misuse that might occur. 121404, standards, in addition to the eight standards listed, please do not, please also consider music bands and noises that pertains to neighbors. Requirements for suitable hours may help neighbor accept the new uses. 121405, application requirements, item number one is a special exception, the same as a special permit. More clarification would help to mitigate any misuse that might occur. Item number three, adequate light and lighting that should have said light beyond the boundaries of the subject property should be defined more narrowly than not being able to see the light beyond the property. Refer to 1212 exterior lighting Durham zoning regulations. Thank you for the opportunity to respond to Durham's draft regulations for farm breweries, cideries, wineries and distilleries. If you have any questions about this report, please feel free to contact us at, and this is the Regional Ag Commission for River Cog, signed sincerely by Walter Adamant's, who was the chairman of the Regional Ag Commission. The Regional Ag Commission is composed of the 17 towns, members 17 towns in our region, and so they give a kind of a overview of what they see. Okay, and then the last thing I have is a survey which was put forth regarding some questions in order to help our town planner craft some language here for this proposal. And I want to offer this, this says what minimum acres would you prefer? Fine, just like that. The question is a minimum of five, 70% of the, I'm sorry, who's, who needs to be muted?
Me, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm almost done with this, with this, going through these, these documents, so. What minimum acreage would you prefer? Minimum of five acres? 70% of the commissioners that responded agreed minimum of five acreage. Minimum of 10 acreage was 20% and no minimum requirement was 10%. So the overwhelming response there would have been minimum of five acres. Then the second question asked was what percentage of ingredients needs to be grown onsite? And the 50% of the respondents said the same as Connecticut General Statutes. No one said no percentage required, and keep the phrase a portion of 40% responded in the affirmative to that. Overwhelming, I guess 50% would be same as general statute. Question number three, define working farm. The overwhelming majority here, 70%, said that the working farm should be defined. 30% said no, 70% said yes. Define farm cafe. Overwhelmingly, 80% of the respondents said yes, define a farm cafe. Only 20% said no. And finally, set different setback requirement than allowed in the underlying zone. 30% said yes, and overwhelmingly 70% said no. Not a different setback requirement than allowed in the underlying zone. All right, with that, and because we have members of the public here, I'm going to go to the public next, and I'm going to ask to please either raise your hand so we can see you if you're on the screen and you're live, or if you'd like to use the raising hand tool, we will call on you. And we'll start with the members of the public. Any from, anyone from the public wishing to speak? Robin, are they able to? Are they able to access?
They should be able to.
All right.
Frank?
Yes? Yes, Rick?
Am I on?
You are. Go ahead, sir.
I'm having technical problems if we send, so I can't get in on the picture, but with all the mess around, I missed some of the very important correspondence you had. But, you know, I was born and raised here in town on a dairy farm. I tend to think of black and white, whole steamed cows and John Deere tractors, but there's more to farming than that. And anything we can do to keep farming alive and not only Durham, but in Connecticut, I'm all in favor. I trust you use your good judgment and try to do what's best for the town and the majority of the people in the town. Thanks again. I guess I missed the Tilcon hearing, right?
Yes, you did, but they were approved.
Yeah, well, I would hope so. We've been an excellent neighbor for years. Thanks, Frank. I'll mute out.
All right. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Frank. This is Troy Turner. Actually, I just want to compliment everybody that's on. I actually like the idea and that you guys are vetting this out. And I support the endeavor of looking to expand the agriculture in the town and provide some additional revenue. So just basically kind of giving a thumbs up to everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Frank. This is Maggie Bascom. As a resident and Economic Development Commission member, I also support new ways of bringing economic development into the town of Durham. However, I agree with the Agricultural Commission's adjusted changes to the draft. I do think the land needs to be increased significantly. And I also think that we should be thinking about properties that are on highways or collector roads. I can just imagine somebody driving, you know, we have really windy roads in town, and I just hear that there's an accident waiting to happen. I also worry about the fact that five acres is much too limited a land parcel for what we're trying to accomplish with a farm, brewery, winery, et cetera. And then in addition, I would say that probably at least 25%, maybe 50% of the crop would be grown onsite to really warrant the opportunity of a farm, winery, brewery, et cetera.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to speak? Any others wishing to speak? All right. I will then, as that's the case, I will turn this over to the commission members, and then I'd like to go to, to Robin Newton, who is our town planner. So commission members that'd like to speak, go ahead. Joe, you have your hand up. Go ahead. Joe, I think you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'd like to start off, I guess, with a few questions for Robin from our last meeting and the questions that we had. In regards to Portland's regulation changes, did you get the Cog's referral for that regulation change to the state highways that they were proposing?
No, Joe, I don't remember seeing anything for that come in.
Can, can we get that?
Well, they withdrew it, so when they re-propose it, well, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was withdrawn, Joe, that, that proposal they had for only on highways.
The, also, at our last meeting, we discussed, you were going to look into Wallingford with Paradise and Gouvier Vineyards to understand the issues there.
Yep, so their planner is out on maternity leave, but I have a colleague who's a planner who was actually the ZBA chairman in Wallingford for quite a few years. The issues that they have there revolved around one resident who frequently complained about one of the vineyards, and I'm not going to use their names because I don't think it's appropriate. And other than that, one of the other, one of those two vineyards just didn't want to follow the regs that were in place and were looking to do more than what the town wanted to allow them to do. So it wasn't an issue with their regs or with the vineyards. It was really what the vineyard was looking to do that wasn't going to be allowed by Wallingford.
Okay. I still have more comments, I guess, Frank.
Go ahead, Joe.
To me, as, as from the start of this, I, I continue to have issue with the lot size, especially being now lower to five acres. I, I can't support that. I still have issues and concerns about the setbacks that we're relying on the setbacks for the underlying zones. I gave the example at our last meeting, and I'll give it again. For residential zone, there are no setback requirements for parking. There's no setback requirements for driveways. And to me, to rely on the underlying zones setbacks for this, these types of endeavors, I think that if, if I correct that the residential zone, you have a side setback of like 40 feet. So that means we're proposing to allow a tasting room to be 40 feet off of the property boundary. Outdoor patios could also be 40 feet off the property boundary. And thereby, if the adjoining property, if their house is 40 feet off the property, somebody's going to have tasting rooms. tasting rooms and, and events within eighty feet of their house. And, and to me, I, I can't support that. I don't think to rely solely on the underlying, um, setbacks is, is, uh, is a mistake on our part.
Just, uh, one thing, Joe, point of clarification, this is not the event, the agricultural events regulation, that would.
I understand that, Frank. I under. Well, the events, they'll be applying for the events, but if somebody is gonna be an applicant for a vineyard cidery brewery, and they're under the impression that their tasting room can be forty feet off of, of a property line, and then if they're gonna come back later and file for an event application, and then now what are we gonna tell them? Well, it's gotta be a hundred, it's gotta be a hundred and fifty feet, when their, their tasting room and their, their building and outdoor patio and stuff is, is built to one standard, and then for events, we're gonna hold them to another standard. So, I, I think that causes concerns.
Well, they do refer, I think they reference in this, in this proposed one, the current one, makes reference for events to the events standard, so they know that they have to go there.
I know, but I guess when I'm looking at it, and I'm jumping ahead of myself a little bit, that when we had Don Poland come in, one of the things in his report, and one of the things that is, if you're an investor, you know, what are you looking for? You're looking for predictability and you're looking for stability. And, and in this regulation, I see none. I don't see where it's predictable for an applicant, and I don't think where it's, it's stable for an applicant. It's, it's, I understand the, the drive to, uh, allow flexibility, but I think we've gone way beyond the point of allowing flexibility, and we're not giving predictability and stability with this regulation. And it's, it causes me great concern where in today's, um, draft, I certainly can't support it. And, and I think in some cases, and then maybe in this, these particular cases, because of the, uh, volume of traffic, trip generation, that we should consider including the events as one application for these types of venues, so that the applicant can explain their, their proposed business model, what type of events they would like to see, um, because it's gonna be critical, I think, for us, when we're approving the application for the vineyard cidery brewery, that we should understand upfront what their expectations are for the type of events that they would like to be holding. And it probably behooves us to have both of them, uh, together and, and, and not acting separately on them. Uh, the percentage grown, um, I think that we should be sticking with the twenty-five percent grown in Durham. Um, I also have, um, concern about the language where it says, uh, grown on site or in conjunction with. I think there's a problem with the or. The way I read it, grown on site or in conjunction with, tells me that I don't have, really have to grow anything on site. I could do it in conjunction with someone else. So, when I read it, I, I really have an issue with the or, because we don't wanna end up allowing or having an applicant come in and say, well, I'm gonna start a brewery, but I'm not gonna grow anything on my property, I'm gonna be doing in conjunction with somebody else, somewhere else. I don't think that was our intent. If our intent truly is about supporting agriculture, then they should be growing something on the property where they're going to be running the vineyard or, or the brewery.
All right. I see Josh Edinger has his hand up, so I'll go Josh, please.
Um, I was gonna comment about the setbacks. Um, one of the things for me, um, it, that I sort of like about these agritourism type businesses, is that it is a mechanism that you can save, like, old barns and the, like, fabric that sort of makes a town feel, um, the way it does. You know, without sort of new revenue streams for those buildings, you know, they, like, fall into disrepair and then just get torn down or fall down. And so, if you have restrictive setbacks and some of these old buildings don't meet them, um, you know, it's very hard then to imagine how they can attract new uses. Um, you know, to the point about, like, if someone is gonna make, you know, go to the effort of making the patio, you know, a bad place, regards to, like, it's gonna be disruptive to the neighbor if they have music outside, I think that is on us to say, sorry, you can't have music outside. Like, that's the choice that you made by putting the patio there and asking just to have, you know, tastings on the patio. I, I don't know, we're now speculating on what we might approve in the future without actually seeing an application, but as far as, like, if we codify the setbacks in the regulation in stone, there's no wiggle room for some of these things that I can imagine this regulation might help with, um, that I'm sort of pointing out, the old farm buildings. Um, but it is on us, if we leave it loose, to be very mindful about, you know, what could be disruptive and then being, you know, firm that's saying, yeah, okay, you wanna use this building, well, it's inside only. Um, no, you can't put a parking lot there, like, no, you can't have outdoor music there. Um, like, that's on us, and the, you know, the form of the regulation, meaning that it's a special exception, allows us to do that, but then it's just on us and future commissions to, to make sure that happens.
All right. Other commission members wishing to speak? Do I have any other commission? Oh, go ahead.
John Denunzia.
Yeah, John?
I, I think, um, I feel strongly that, um, this business of a certain percentage of the produce grown in Durham is gonna be prohibitive. Suppose some farmer owns land in Middlefield and Durham, uh, or locally, some other town, North Branford, whatever, uh, as long as it's Connecticut grown, I think that, uh, kinda hews to the state stature, and I think that's the way we ought to be going.
Thank you very much for your comments. Dick, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, actually, uh, you know, we keep, I'm having a problem because we're trying to satisfy both the farmer and allow them to be productive, which to my mind, doesn't quite mean you should be running a saloon or restaurant, you should be growing grapes, distilling them or doing whatever you have to do to bottle them and sell them on premise through a tasting room, et cetera. But certainly, otherwise, if you don't put in a minimum amount of acreage, a minimum amount that has to be grown on site, then you're talking about a package store out in the middle of the residential zone, pack store, saloon, or you name it. And to me, uh, that's gonna be, uh, a real problem with some of the neighbors. Your own, our own agricultural committee has recommended twenty-five acres, and I think their reasoning is pretty good, because that allows the big farm to do it. But if you start doing this five acre, and you're gonna have weddings and bands and you name it, you're not just going to disrupt neighborhoods, but obviously you have some businesses in town right now, like the Horseshoe Tavern, which pays a lot of tax, which is a restaurant, is gonna be in competition with them, uh, and to me, uh, it's not gonna be equal. You also have some other restaurants in, in Middlefield and, and obviously on the border. I, I think we need to pay more attention, quite frankly, to the farm commission, and they represent the farmers, and I, I think it's imperative that they become at least a fifty-fifty partner on whatever we decide.
All right. Thank you, Dick. Other members of the commission wishing to speak? Joe Pasquale has his hand up.
Yeah, I'd just, uh, like to add, I guess, to, to Dick's point and with the acreage, that there are a hundred and seventy-two lots in Durham that are between five and ten acres. Be, on, from ten to twenty acres, there's ninety-four lots. From twenty and up, there's a hundred and twelve. Some of them are town-owned, some of them are state-owned, um, that brings it down to eighty-one lots. That's three hundred and set, forty-seven locations that we could receive applications from at the five acre minimum. And to me, that's a, a huge, uh, number to be looking at, and that, I think that, you know, when we look at this, I look at what do we want to achieve as an outcome? Do we want, um, a Gouvier-type vineyard, um, a Chenard-type vineyard in our town? Or are we looking for, um, what Portland has, the Aragoni, uh, vineyard, that's right on Route sixty-six, on a small parcel of land, doesn't grow enough grapes to support itself, and, and that's what we're gonna see, I think, to Dick's point, popping up all over our community. And to me, we should be understanding what we wanna see as, as outcome, and, and not so much as what it appears to me, leaving it to chance, and, and lowering our, our standard to, to a five acre minimum to, uh, to start these endeavors, and, and most of them are all gonna be in the residential zone. I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that, that, um, our commercial, our, our industrial area is gonna end up, um, housing these types of indep, I would venture to say probably ninety percent are gonna end up in our residential, uh, neighborhoods, that we should be extremely cautious of, about what we're doing here.
All right. Are there any other members of the commission that wish to speak? If not, um, I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring here. Um, what I did this, this afternoon on my way back here to Durham was to listen to the actual Zoom meeting that was the regional ag commission meeting, um, which resulted in their report, and the reason was I wanted to kinda get a sense for, um, what they were saying, because there's certainly, um, of, of, uh, uh, two ends of the spectrum here. On the one hand, the regional ag commission, which is composed, composed of members of seventeen towns, it's the region, our Rivercoag region, um, they're saying no minimum. On the far end of the spectrum, we have our local agricultural commission that's proposing twenty-five acres. The current language says ten, and there was a lot of discussion and the results of the Zoom survey, and the state of Connecticut, uh, all are at, uh, five acres. Um, so I think we need to look at this, because, uh, it seems to me, especially, you have to remember, it's not always a winery, right? This regulation covers brewery, covers other things. And for a brewery, uh, having five acres is a lot for hops or barley. Um, the regional ag commission, uh, didn't feel there should be any minimum, because there are a lot of instances where you can have a small-scale operation, perfectly acceptable. They just, they don't need ten, twenty, thirty acres of land in order to do what they wanna do. It's still agriculture. The second thing is this Durham, the idea of Durham grown. Well, that's a little bit of a hurdle, especially if there's a new applicant that comes in. A new applicant cannot have Durham grown, not for three years, maybe not for five years. And so if we're telling people that wanna come in, uh, to town to do a winery, and they're willing to invest money into the operation, that, uh, they have to have Durham grown right away, well, that's a hurdle that they can't get over. It's almost as if we're writing a regulation that can't be used. The same is true, I think, with the twenty-five acre, uh, idea of having a, a large lot. That may not be viable. Um, I think Connecticut grown is the important thing, as long as whatever it is that they're, they're putting in their product is Connecticut grown, and we can specify percentages, that's all fine, but I tend to say Durham grown, especially when, you know, that may be their startup business, their new business. We need to be accommodating for that, I think, if we really wanna have these types of businesses in town. They're not gonna have crops right out of, out of, right out of the box. And the market is where, if we're gonna try to be competitive in this winery and, 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 uh, cidery and, and brewery business, the market's at like five acres. It's not these huge parcels, and it's not, it's not necessarily nothing. So, that's my take on it after listening to the regional ag commission. Uh, I listened to the comments that were made back and forth, I heard Warren's comments, and I heard some of the other comments of the other participants, and then the report came out, and the report basically says what the majority of the members of that commission felt, which that there should be no minimum. I'm not saying that that's appropriate, I'm just saying that, that you have these two ends of the spectrum, and this commission needs to kinda weigh those and say, what's, what's reasonable? And the idea of, of, of trying to vision what we're gonna get is impossible, because we're not the applicant. Only the applicant knows that. We can have a concept of what we will allow and what we won't allow, but what it'll look like, where it'll be, we have no idea. So we do the best we can to protect the citizens of the town while we try to further the, the idea of having a winery, a brewery, a cidery, something of this nature in Durham, which, by the way, is supposed to be the agricultural town, that's our brand, and we wanna continue that, in my opinion. With that, if there's any other comments from commissioners, if there are, I'll let you speak, and if not, we'll go to back to the public.
Hey, Frank?
Yes?
Uh, my name's John Herzig, I'm not the most technological savvy person here, but my father wasn't able to comment earlier during the public session. He actually walked over to my house so he could, so I was hoping, uh, he could talk if, if you don't mind.
Uh, we'll be going to the public very shortly, so just, uh, tell them to hang on and we'll get to them. Do I have any other, other commission members who wish to speak?
Uh, yeah, Frank.
Yeah, Dick.
Um, as far as, uh, when you, when you say that, um, you know, the problem with growing grapes, and you're correct when you say that you obviously can't grow enough grapes and want to do the business, but you can also alleviate that problem by having, say, a three-year-old, uh, moratorium on their own grown grapes, and then after a reasonable period of time, name it, three, four, five years, then they have to have so-called on-premise grown grapes, or whatever percentage you wanna put in. But I mean, all of these things, and by the way, a winery is a heck of a lot different than a brewery. Uh, I don't think there's gonna be too many breweries that are gonna be growing their own hops, number one, uh, and, and, and it's more of an industrial thing. But a winery specifically is really agriculturally, you know, uh, it, it's, you assume that's gonna be on a farm, or it should be. And, and again, my, my problem with the five acres or less or whatever is that you're just gonna wind up with a bunch of basic package stores or restaurants out in the middle of residential areas, and we're gonna have problems. We had problems, you know, with barking dogs because the kennel was too close to residences, and now, you know, we are basically opening up three-quarters of the town to another, what could be possibly a real terrible thing in a neighborhood, and that would be bands and weddings and et cetera, et cetera, where in fact, you need room, and they certainly shouldn't be something that every weekend it happens. And that's what's gonna happen if you start allowing five acres, in my opinion, this will call minimum or maximum.
All right, thank you, Dick. Uh, good ideas, and I'm gonna go to Matt, he had his hand up next. Matt, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna say, you know, I, I absolutely respect what our ag commission put forth in, in terms I just want to say, you know, I, I absolutely respect what our ag commission put forth in, in terms of the recommendations. I personally think twenty-five plus acres is going to be extremely restrictive. And I think that it also, you know, on the one hand, it really, I guess, drives home the fact that it has to be a, a working farm. It does restrict somebody that might be looking to open a smaller farm or a smaller farm that already exists. And I certainly see people's points in the five acres being too small. But I still really do believe that, you know, we've heard from several people, including the Regional Ag Commission. It says that you can be very efficient with small amounts of acreage. And these applicants are going to have to come in with a site plan and we're going to have the final authority on a lot of that stuff. And I completely understand, especially with the dog kennel so fresh in the, in the rearview mirror, that we have had issues and major issues in the town. It's cost us a lot of money in litigation when it comes to this sort of thing. We do have to be very careful. But again, that's why the applicant has to ultimately come in front of us because we are the ones that are going to be tasked with making that, that final decision. And I don't know if it's going to be, it's, it's one of those things where if we're too restrictive, it's not going to work. But we absolutely want to be restrictive enough where we're protecting ourselves. And I think finding that middle ground is going to be a little bit of a challenge.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we'll go to Joe Pasquale. He had his hand up.
Yeah, I guess one of the comments that I'd like to make is the, about the cog. And with all due respect to the cog and their opinion about it, their roles and their responsibilities are not the protection of the town of Durham or, or its residents. So I think to me, you know, although I, I appreciate their comments, I wonder if they're going to be making the same comments when it's their own town. And that's why I was very interested in seeing, and maybe we could ask Torrance, any other towns in the seventeen-town region, what recommendations they have made to those towns to make sure that what they're offering to the town of Durham, they're consistent with their, the rest of the seventeen towns. So to me, I, I take their comments a little bit with a grain of salt when they're, when they're speaking about no minimums. Because I, I question whether they're making those same comments when it's in their own town.
I don't know if anybody hears actually saying zero, no minimum. I, I don't think that's even on the table, though.
No, but some of the, some of the points that they're trying to make to us about being so unrestrictive in, in the approach that we're taking, I think should lend concern. To the point that Dick made about, I think that we can add language for the first years of, of production so that we are keeping it locally grown in, in Durham to accommodate that concern. And I'd like to again, go back to the language. Do we have any intent in changing grown on-site or conjunction with? Or are we going to leave it that way where an applicant can come in and say they're not going to grow anything? But they want to apply for one of these establishments to be in our residential zone without growing anything.
Well, Joe, what I'd like to do is go back to the public. It's a public hearing and let them speak. And then we're going to come back and we'll talk to Robin and we can talk to her in detail about what, what kind of ideas she has and how we can address some of these things.
Frank, before you do that, I have Phil Auger who's on the phone, so he can't raise his hand. He'd like to make a comment.
He'll have to wait till the public comment. We're going to go into that now, if that's okay.
He's a commission member, so you want to wait for him?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I almost forgot, he's new.
Phil, you're good to go.
Phil, go ahead. You have the floor. I can't hear him, Robin.
Yeah, he's on the phone. I don't know what his number is to unmute him.
So it seems we're having significant issues with people being able to access this public hearing.
I don't know that that's the case, Joe. Let Robin see if she can unmute Phil.
I'm just going to unmute the people who are on the phone. I'm not sure which number is his.
That's fine. Go ahead.
It just told me I'm unmuted. Sorry for that.
All right. You are, you are on. Go ahead, Phil.
Great. Thanks very much. I, I thank the ag commission for their input. But I think that the hundred and seventy-two, and I heard Joe latch on to it as well, that the lot count is a bit of a red herring. What's the correlation between the number of houses and the number of applications that we get for accessory apartments, just as an example? So I think it, it's sort of silly and thrown out there as a bit of a misnomer. So I, I am in favor of the five-acre zoning and I, I agree with most of what you were saying there, Frank, in terms of having some flexibility to see what may come. And while I understand what Dick's saying about maybe like a three-year moratorium, I think that if there's anything that we've learned from these past few months, it's very hard to predict exactly what's going to happen. How soon we save three years and then there's some sort of a, a drought or something. And now they don't have grapes or it impeded the growth and they needed four years. Like, I just don't think we should over-regulate this. And because it does, each one will have to come in for approval, I think that's ultimately what we're entrusted to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Phil, and thanks for, for keep trying to get in there. All right. If there are, if there are no further comments of the commissioner members, I would like to go to the public. Members of the public wishing to speak. We keep this orderly. It just, I guess if you can put your hand up, if you know how to use the raise-hand tool, great. If you don't and you want to, if you're on live video and you want to wave, we'll get you. Or if you just want to speak, if you're on the telephone, that's fine too. Just identify yourself if you could.
Are you good talking to her?
All right.
Yeah, are you good talking to her? Who?
Hello? Yes, please identify yourself.
Want to hook it up?
Hello?
Yeah, going now or no?
Hello? All right. Why don't we do this? Let's go to Lindsay Herzig. Robin, you can maybe do that mute and then we'll, we'll put Lindsay on. Go ahead, Lindsay. Go ahead, Lindsay.
This isn't Lindsay. This is Warren Herzig.
Oh, hi Warren. How are you?
Not too bad.
Good.
Yeah. If you think John is technically incompetent on these, I'm even worse. And I apologize. I thought I could speak on my computer like I, like I was able to two weeks ago, but it didn't work out. But I do have a few comments. First is an introduction. My name is Warren Herzig. I live at forty-seven R Johnson Lane. And I am the current owner and operator of Herzig Family Farm. Just a bit of history about the farm. It started out with my grandfather. He had dairy farm, retail milk delivery. We converted to a dairy farm. It was a beef farm. We also did commercial sweet corn. And presently, we're doing hay and Christmas trees. I just point that out because I'd just like people to know that times change, agriculture has to change, need to diversify. I did address comments to Robin after the last public hearing and I thank her for getting back to me. But I'd like to go over some of those comments. The first comment was that we reach out to other towns to see what they had in regulations. I guess in particular, I was interested, you know, with some of the adjacent towns, like the town of Wallingford, town of North Branford, what they had in their regulations in terms of standards, minimums, et cetera. Have we done that? And were we able to get any information from the town planners in that regard?
So Warren, what we're going to do is public hearing part with the public speaking now is put whatever questions you have out. And then what we're going to do is after we're done with the public part, we'll go back and we're going to go to Robin directly. She can answer these. So go ahead. We did read, by the way, I don't know if you apart, you, you heard it or not, but we read your letter, your response to Robin into the record.
I, I heard that, yes. But I was looking specifically in terms of what towns we reached out to and what we were able to glean from their regulations.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, as you said, the purpose of these regulations are for economic diversity, sustainability of agriculture and to preserve agricultural activities. I guess I would suggest that in order to develop comprehensive regulations, you might want to work in conjunction with the ag commission and EDC prior to coming out with the regulations. That way you would get full support from the group as a whole rather than solicit comments after the draft. I think working together would be a preferred method from my standpoint. I, years ago, was on planning and zoning. I recognize that you have a difficult job. You have to make tough decisions. But again, I would suggest that maybe working in conjunction might produce a better product. Again, I would agree with, since I'm a member of the ag commission, with our stance that we do need minimum of twenty-five acres in order to account for buffering, et cetera. In farming, you do run into a lot of problems or can run into a lot of problems. I think when people move to the country, they have a vision of a little red barn, couple cows out there. And that isn't agriculture these days. It's certainly more intense. There's more things going on in terms of noise, dust, et cetera. So we have to be very sensitive to neighbors if we're going to put essentially a commercial operation in a residential zone. I asked about dimensional items and Robin indicated that they were in there. Well, I looked at the initial draft and there was a hundred-foot separating distance for buildings associated with tasting rooms, et cetera, as well as parking. What are the regulations that we would have to meet for these now? In particular, a building for tasting or cafe or parking even. Are there separations for those? Because I think, again, we need to be considerate of our neighbors. I'm glad to see that you have spelled out a port, what portion needs to be grown on-site. And I guess I would think that we would need to establish some more minimum standards. For example, hours of operation. Do we intend to have these operated seven days a week? Should we look to having it maybe Thursday, Friday and the weekend? And again, I think we should set a maximum or hours where we would want to see, if they want to come in with less, that's fine, but no later than eleven o'clock. See what else I have here? And I apologize because I really wasn't set up to discuss this in John's garage. I guess I was wondering, what are the requirements for fifteen-one and fifteen-two? And what would be a basis for a waiver? I think that was in the regu, in your proposed regulation. And lastly, I guess I would like to applaud the commission for considering this. However, we need to develop these regulations in a comprehensive way that will serve the town of Durham, the ag community, as well as EDC. Thank you for letting me come.
Thank you very much for your comments. We welcome them. And we're going to go next to Janet Morganti and then Camilia Zimboni. Do I have that right? You will be after Janet Morganti. So go ahead, Janet.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
All right. Then a lot to take in here tonight. I want to thank you guys for working so hard on this. I have some questions and concerns and, and the questions can be answered later. Given the fact that for at least grapes, it does seem to take quite a while to establish the vines. So my question is, during that time, while the farm's trying to get itself going, are they allowed to buy grapes from another source in Connecticut? So that's a question maybe Robin can answer later. The other thing is, and I respect Joe Pasquale's opinions on everything. Joe researches everything, but I have to disagree that five acres is, is too little. I think he's being very optimistic to think that we're going to be overrun by people starting vineyards, wineries, however you want to word it, because we keep using vineyard and winery interchangeably. And we're really basically talking about a farm winery that's going to be growing the grapes, processing the grape, selling the wine and, and the whole package. So I just don't think they're going to be popping up like that. And my fear is that we, we always act out of fear about the worst-case scenarios that can happen. And I know sometimes scenarios pop up that we don't anticipate. And that's just about everything that happens in life. But if we keep acting on fear, we're never going to, we're never going to get anywhere. We're never going to get people interested in coming to our town for anything. So that's another, that's again, my opinion. If there's concern about whether there's actual farming going on in these, any of these properties, I would suggest some type of an annual inspection or biannual inspection for somebody to go out there and make sure they're growing what they're supposed to be growing. If that's, that's an issue that people might have. And I think Warren said something about people have this idea of what it's like to farm and then they come and, and it doesn't turn out to be what they expect it to be. Well, I'm going to guess that Warren's ancestors might have, maybe they didn't know everything about farming. I don't know. I don't know where they came from. They came from a farming community from somewhere else, but everybody has to take a leap. You never, you don't know how it's going to turn out. You don't know if you're going to have a blight. We don't, we didn't know we're going to have a plague going on in our country right now. And that's why we're meeting like this. You cannot anticipate everything going wrong. So again, that's, that's one of my comments. As far as keeping this on state roads, there's a lot of state roads in Durham. I happen to live on one of them. And I, you know, Lyman Orchard is down the street from me. It's in a different town. I live across the street from an industrial park. These were all here before I got here. I don't have a problem with that. Traffic on a nice fall day going back and forth to Lyman's, there is a lot of traffic. But I moved here knowing that that was going to happen. I don't think that's the kind of traffic we're going to get in wineries. If anybody actually wanted to park their car on Whirlwind Hill and watch the traffic go by to Guevez, I don't think they're going to see a hundred cars at one time going up and down that road. So a lot of these things, I just think it's, it's a fear of, of going forward. And, and I just wish we can get over that because we're never going to get any progress if we don't. And let's see, what else I got here? Well, I think that that's pretty much it. I guess just that one question, if Robin can answer it later, I'd appreciate it, but.
All right. And Janet, you are, are you still the, the chair of the Economic Development Commission?
I am.
Oh, good for you. All right. Next we'll.
Give it up, but nobody wanted it.
You're doing a great job.
Thanks, Frank.
All right. So next we'll move on to Camilia Zimboni. Do I have that correct? If I don't, I'm sorry, Camilia.
Okay, it's Camilla.
Camilla.
Hello, thank you for discussing this. I'm Camilla Zimboni, owner at seventy-one Dunhill Road. And first of all, thank you for all the comments. They were very thoughtful. I'm glad we're discussing this thoroughly. So I have a little comment. Well, I'm Italian. I'm always in favor of wineries and breweries in town. So I'm moderately excited about this idea. However, I'd like to reiterate the idea of being cautious, particularly with informing residents of new development. Having followed very closely and suffered a bit from the recent debacle on Dunhill Road, I strongly advise that if regulation warnings are somewhat ambiguous, as Joe Pasquale was pointing out, then that you vet very application very thoroughly. I'm not saying, you know, tighten regulation to the point that it's unwelcoming to business, of course. But please make sure that every application is thoroughly vetted so that you don't end up in situations in which, you know, you're dragged again into litigation and you have a lot of residents that are unhappy with the decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Lindsay Herzig, I see you have a hand up, but I'm not sure if that's just still up or you'd like to speak. Lindsay? All right. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Hi, this is Cheryl Nugent, a member of the EDC.
Oh, hi Cheryl. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Go ahead.
I was wondering, and this might have been covered and I missed it, if the prospective business people, persons are going to buy or rent the land or a combination of both. And also, if the five acres is going back and forth, is there a way that we could say only ten percent of the five-acre properties are eligible for this? And when it's done, it's done. And when it's done, it's done? And that's it.
All right. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, hearing none, we will now go to our Town Planner, Robin Newton. Robin, if you'd be kind enough to answer some of the questions that were posed by some of the residents and others. And then I think you had something that you wanted to present, so I will turn it over to you.
So I think it's the first thing I'm going to start with is just going through some of the changes in the draft from the previous meeting, including there was a couple of tweaks that are different from what the Ag Commission reviewed, which I had told Joe that there might be a couple of differences. They are minor, but they're still different. So by majority vote of the Commission, the acreage was changed from 10 to 5 acres. I put in 25% for the production on the properties, which is in line with Connecticut general statute. The reason I didn't reference Connecticut general statute is because it actually doesn't list a percentage for cideries. So I wanted to keep it consistent for all four uses. We did add a definition for farm café, including adding that it's not to be construed as a full-service sit-down restaurant. Under working farm, I know Joe commented the language at the end. We actually changed that. It says a farm whose agricultural land or buildings that are in an active agricultural use is the new language. In reference to the minimum standards and setbacks for the underlying zone, to take care of the issue which Joe mentioned in our residential zones about being applicable to parking areas and driveways, we did add language that makes it clear that the setbacks shall be applied to all buildings, patios, parking areas and driveways and that increased setbacks may be required depending on site conditions. We kept in the applicant shall propose hours of operation, but we added language that says for each aspect of the business other than the agricultural operation. We added some distinct language. In the event of the principal agricultural use is abandoned and or discontinued, growing of the crops required, which means the growing of the crops required for the brewery, winery, distillery, or cidery, the accessory use is approved under this section. As part of the special exception, approval shall immediately cease, subject to enforcement action if necessary. I think I also want to make sure that people understand that these are in addition to all of the standards that are required for our site plan and special exceptions, which are multiple pages long in our regs. So these aren't the only things that are going to apply to these applications. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to anyone who's reading the reg. It's in addition to what we already have. To answer some of the questions, yes, we started working on this reg back in January. There was a question about whether or not we looked at other towns' regulations. We did. Wallingford requires 10 acres. They actually don't have standards spelled out in their regs. They just have their regular site plan approval special exception standards. North Branford is the same. Lyme actually only requires two acres in theirs and I sent out their regulation, which again, doesn't have very many standards. Clinton actually has a very robust regulation, but they allow everything from like a farm store to a full 2,500-square-foot sit-down restaurant. So they have something called farm-related economic development regs, which are completely different than what we're looking at here. Portland requires five acres. Clinton's minimum requirement is five acres. So we are in line with the towns that are around us and our regulation by far has more standards than the other towns have. There was a comment about 25 acres. Just professionally speaking, from looking at the surrounding towns and from doing some research on wineries and sitting down and speaking to the three people who were interested in possibly coming to Durham, 25 acres would be a no-go. I think 25 acres pretty much puts you off the map for someone who's looking to start up a winery. All the people that we met with were looking at 10 acres. So that's originally what we had in the reg. It was reduced at majority vote of the Commission based on feedback from the Regional Ag Commission and the Regional Planning Commission. It is in line with the surrounding towns. I think I answered the setback question already when we were talking through the reg, but the setbacks are in the reg. They're the underlying zone and we did add some more language to that just to make it clear that it does pertain to parking areas, driveways, patios, et cetera. As far as standard operating hours, that was something that was discussed over the course of three meetings with the board. Originally, it was that we would have certain hours proposed. The Commission didn't want that, so that's why it's not in there. The Commission wanted to see each individual operation proposing their hours, thinking that depending on where they're proposing it does make a difference. So someone in a residential zone, they may not approve the same hours as someone who may propose it in a commercial zone. The question about establishing the vines, I can't remember who asked that question, but that would be something the Commission would consider and put into their approvals as part of a condition. So if somebody came in and they said it's going to take me three years to establish my vineyard and I want to be able to build my building in the next year and have my winery and I'll buy my grapes, you know, Connecticut grown, because that is required under the statute, that would be something the Commission would have to approve and put in as a condition of approval. Camilla had asked about informing residents, so this is a special exception. So it is a public hearing process, so the public absolutely would be involved in that process. And as far as buying or leasing, someone could probably lease from a farmer and have a business on there. They would make application in conjunction with the property owner. I don't think that that's something that we would necessarily be putting in the regs as long as they're meeting all of the other requirements and the property owner is signing off on that application.
All right, thank you very much, Robin. So let me just kind of, one thing I wanted to get clarity on, and I think you mentioned it briefly, but the one that talks about the minimum standards for setback in the underlying zone. So assuming the underlying zone is residential, I think it was mentioned that in residential, the parking areas, the driveways, those things, that we don't regulate how far they can be from the setback or they could actually be in the setback. With what you've got proposed here, this new language, those would be, have to be moved outside the setback. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so that's more stringent than the underlying zone?
Yes.
All right. All right, I think I just have a couple of thoughts on this and certainly welcome any other comment, but I think that there's a couple of things that would be appropriate. The first is because you've put this new language out and I think this is sent out to all the Commission members, is that right?
It was.
All right, so I think it's appropriate that we give them perhaps some time to look through that. I've also heard some comments about the call and being able to call again and so forth. And I think it might be appropriate if we continue the public hearing to make sure that we've got a little extra time for the public if they want to weigh in and also so that maybe if there is an issue with this Zoom thing, that we can make sure that those get resolved for our next meeting. With that, I'm going to just ask the Commission members if they are supportive of that and if they are, fine, they can make a motion to do that. If not, they'd like to talk, they certainly can do that as well. So I'll turn it over to the Commission members.
Frank?
Yes, Dick.
The, what you just said about continuing basically the public hearing, I don't know what's going to happen on May the 20th, but hopefully by May 20th, which was actually our next meeting date, maybe we can do this thing live rather than by the Zoom. But of course, that depends on the governor and several other issues. But I hope that's possible. So in lieu of that, I agree that the hearing should be continued and hopefully we can get more input by the public and other Commissions that are basically involved. And therefore, I propose a motion to continue the public hearing.
Very good. Is there a second to Dick's motion? Well, actually, is there any, do I have a second to Dick's motion? I have a second from Matt Thompson. All right, is there any discussion on the motion?
Hi, Marian O'Brien. I just have a question. I just have a comment.
I'm sorry. Marian, public comment is over at this point, but if you'll...
Oh, okay.
That's okay. We're continuing the public hearing, so you can still submit your comment and we'll have another meeting where you can participate just like this one.
It was only with respect to what he just said. If you could include Zoom with the live meeting, just in case many people don't want to come to a big meeting. That was my suggestion.
Yeah, we have no idea what will happen on the 20th. We could be Zoom, we could be in real time again. All right, so is there a second to Dick's motion? It was made and seconded by Matt, is that correct, Matt? Yes, all right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor to continue the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining. I declare the motion passed and we'll need a motion to go back into our regular meeting.
Does Chris I saw move?
Moved by Chris.
Second.
Second by Matt. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstaining, declare the motion passed. With that, that'll bring us to our agenda. Just hold on, I got to grab that one. All right. So item number eight, adoption of a draft regulation for farm breweries, wineries and cideries and distilleries. We have voted to continue the public hearing and so that will remain open for the public so that they can participate and send in comments or attend our next meeting. And we're going to continue that meeting to the next meeting of our Commission, which is, Jen, what is that, the 20th?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that would be the 20th. All right, very good. And with that, we will move on to item number nine, the payment of the bills. And I have some bills.
Lucky us.
Let me see what we have here. Okay, bills, there we go. All right, number one, Jen Keough. This is for the April 15, 2020 P&amp;Z meeting minutes, $180. Number two, Jerry Russ, town of Durham, for CEO work. The total is $1,605. Steve Byrne, two bills. One is for $3,150 and that is for the Baldwin Appeal Summit Drive. And the second one is in the amount of $3,307.50 Baldwin Appeal Summit Drive. Now, these two Steve Byrne bills, at the last meeting, it was noted that we were concerned a little bit about why the Baldwin Appeal was still ongoing. And in talking to Steve, he wanted to let you know that the appeal took a particular turn at the hearing and that the judge demanded that he and the other counsel go through the record and identify any and all supporting evidence and for the Commission's decision. He thought that that task was going to be done by their counsel. They thought it was going to be done by Steve. It ended up being that only Steve was the only one that did it and brought the record to court. And the court ordered what's called a supplemental briefing and that's something that's rarely done, he says. And that's why there's so many hours and this is still ongoing. The other thing that he wanted me to tell you was that because of the governor's orders and opening dates for courts and so forth, that the courts have said that any cases that don't require a hearing, and the Baldwin Appeal is one of those, because it's already gone through that process, the decision will be made without any further ado, if you will. So Steve basically told me there won't be any additional charges for Baldwin Appeal, assuming that the court does what he was told. So your two bills for Steve Byrne, the one for $3,150 and the one for $3,307.50. If what he's saying is accurate, will be the end of the Baldwin Appeal. Because this is also payment of bills and we're talking about Steve's bill, I think it's appropriate that I let you know that he sent a letter, which basically says he's aware of some questions regarding billing and that is because he was on our call when we were discussing his bills. Listening but not able to... I'm not sure what that is. Not able to comment. So he basically says he reduced his hourly rate to $175 an hour and that compares favorably with what other law firms charge. Fees can range from 190 to more commonly 225 or 350 dollars an hour for legal assistance and his lower rate reflects the fact that we have been a customer for many years. So he just asked if we have any issues with him, you know, just reach out to him. It's kind of a courtesy letter, but he did want to let you know that he was on the call, he heard your concerns and he is trying to minimize the billing, even though any attorney is never inexpensive. With that, those are the three bills that I have. Jen, do we have any further bills or is it just those three? Or four, or rather?
Just the four.
All right. All right, Commission members, it's up to you. What would you like to do?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, Matt has made a motion to pay the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dick Erickson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, I declare the motion passed. And with that, that'll go to item number 10, minutes of the previous meeting. These should have been in your packet and emailed to you. I'll give you a minute to just consider them and then if someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I saw move.
Okay, motion's been made. That was Chris, right?
Correct.
Chris, is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Matt Thompson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed and abstaining. And if you were not at the meeting, it would be appropriate for you to abstain. Just let us know so that we can capture that. All right, with that, that brings us to item number 11, which is the zoning enforcement officer's report. Is Jerry Russ on the call or do we have a report from him, Robin?
He is not on the call and he emailed in the middle of our meeting saying he was getting towed, something, some car issue. So I didn't get any written reports from him, so unfortunately I can't help in that category.
All right. With that regard, we will move on to item number 12, Town Planner's Report.
Frank, it's Joe. Before we move on with the zoning enforcement, the last bill we got was, I believe, over $4,000. This bill's $1,600. And how much do we have left in the budget? And what have we budgeted for next year? Because we're already at like $5,000 and he's been on this position for like five months. Next year, are we going to go over budget?
Well, Joe, we can check and get the numbers and make sure we get you the accurate figures, but my recollection was when we talked about a town, a zoning enforcement officer that was different than the town planner, we specifically said that there would be a cost to that and that cost was somewhere, I think Jeff estimated it at 20 or $24,000 a year. Now, there is money, go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
If I remember correctly, I think the first bill we got from Jerry, it was in October, November, that we were presented with last week or two weeks ago. I can't remember the exact date, but I think it was in the fall. So it's not just for 2020. I think 2019 was on there also. I don't know if there's a bill somewhere that we can check real quick.
I don't have one here. I'm not sure if Jen or Robin has access.
Yeah, I think, Matt, I agree. Some of it was from last year. But I'm just concerned that we've already spent about 6, you know, 6,000. I just want to make sure that we're staying in line. I just wanted to make sure that we're staying in line with what we've budgeted.
Right.
I, I believe, I believe that we are, Joe. We can get the exact figures to you, but as like, as I said, I know we had this discussion, and Jeff made recommendations that if we were going to have a separate CEO, that we needed to have this money set aside, and he came up with a number. It was quite large.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we can check that and get back to you.
All right.
I can, I can bring those bills up when I go into the office and get those out to you. There, there's been a total of three bills that he has submitted. It was about 4,000 for the first and second, and then the 1,600. And I can make copies of those and send those out.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. With that, we'll move on to item number 12, the town planner's report. Robin?
Yep. So one of the pressing items I wanted to bring up to the commission and get your guys' agreement and feedback on is concerning the governor's reopening phasing. So he, right now, is gonna be allowing restaurants to do just outdoor dining coming up May 21st. We have a couple of our restaurants who have areas to do outdoor dining, but we have, you know, the rest that do not. I have reached out and spoken with our restaurants to see who's gonna be interested in doing that, who's gonna be setting up for that, or who wants to set up for that. I also reviewed our regulations. One of the things that's been sort of going around, and there actually may be an order that comes out from the governor about this, because CCAPA, Connecticut Bar, Casio have all have been involved in trying to get some clarity, because our regulations obviously would call for them coming in for, you know, site plan approval or special exception. And they would be putting dining in their parking, which of course, most regulations wouldn't allow. So a lot of us planners and zoning officers are sort of thinking that the best way to do it is not to be changing regs for what will hopefully be a temporary situation, but instead coming out with just a memo from our planning and zoning commission saying we're going to allow them to do it in a safe manner with the, you know, approvals of obviously our health department and, and their guidance in their parking lots if need be. But we won't take up any enforcement actions against them for doing that. Then requiring them to come in for permits is gonna be cumbersome, it's going to take an extended period of time. To change the regs would take an extended period of time. So this is sort of a win-win for both you guys and for our businesses, for economic development, to try to get them back up and running. So I just wanted to get your guys' feedback on that, what, what your thoughts are. Obviously, we don't have a bunch of restaurants. You're really talking about five, I think, and two already are set up for some outdoor dining. So I just wanted to see what you guys thought.
Robin, this is Frank. I do have a question. I saw something that I think came through Cost or Betsy Guerra regarding some, I guess it was a proposed action plan of how to implement this kind of stuff. I don't know if you've looked at it or not. But as you say, we don't have a lot of, a lot of restaurants, and I think even the horseshoe has the ability to have outdoor dining now. Is that right?
So the horseshoe does have a patio. They, I think they said they can seat 36, or they have 36 tables. I can't remember how she worded it. Softails has sort of an outsore, outdoor deck or something that they use. Those are the two that already are sort of set up for it. Bosie Corner would like to do it, you know, to put a few tables outside so that they can do that. I also reached out to, who was the other one? It's a Mexican restaurant, I think. I can't... Yes, thank you. And I haven't heard back from them yet, so I don't know if they'd be interested or not. Like I said, we don't have a lot. Horseshoe basically said they're gonna utilize the outdoor dining that they have, because it's already approved. But if it goes well, they would like the ability to be able to expand into their parking area until they're allowed to have indoor dining, which could take a few months.
All right. I got a, Joe, Joe Pasquale has his hand up. Go ahead, Joe.
Um, yeah, Robin, if we go forward with this, is there gonna be any type of protection for the dining area that's gonna be in the parking lot? Are they gonna put up any type of, like ballards, or where, you know, incoming traffic into a parking lot seems like a potential safety issue that should be, you know, reviewed?
Yep. So my thoughts were this, so there's a bunch of, of sort of best practices and guidelines that have been going around on a bunch of different listservs, but there's supposed to be some guidance coming out on Friday. Certainly, I think if we agreed that we wouldn't take enforcement actions, part of that agreement would be that they would have to come in and present at least a plan to me to review, and they would have to put up some kind of safety precautions. They're gonna have to have the health district involved, because there's gonna be stipulations again, which haven't come out yet, as to like how far the tables have to be set apart, et cetera. But yeah, some kind of, you know, they're gonna have to be able to cordon off safely if they're gonna be in their parking lot, where the people would be dining versus where people would be parking. That would have to be part of a review.
Yeah. So we're not exposed to any liability because of this approval process?
Right.
I just wanna make sure that we're being, being cautious with the safety of people sitting in a parking lot.
Yep.
All right. Other commissioners have questions or comments or suggestions for Robin?
I wonder what's going on with Dairy, Dairy Serve. Is that part, is that considered a restaurant?
Um, so my understanding is they're already set up for outdoors.
They're already open.
They're already open. So I know I was on a staff call on Monday, I think it was, and I believe Bill Mulardo had already received a couple of complaints about the social distancing there, and he was gonna be addressing that with them. So like I said, those type of, what's gonna be required for social distancing, they can be open if they're doing takeout, but they're supposed to be practicing social distancing right now. Best practices, which we've been hearing that they haven't been. So that goes to Bill Mulardo, and he was following up on that complaint.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Josh?
Well, we're asking good questions, but I want to make sure that you hear that, at least for me, that yes, I'm very much in favor of like allowing our restaurants and businesses that have been shut down by state order to try to like come back to some type of normal. And yes, there's like going to be a procedure, and someone should oversee it, and as long as it's like basically common sense, I would be in, you know, a big, like, basically, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it, because the quicker we can move back to some type of normal, like the better off we're going to be. The, the only stipulation I say is, yeah, as soon as the, the state lifts the, like, social distancing order, then if they want to continue to have outdoor dining, they should come and see us.
Yeah. And so that's my argument as to not try to change the reg or have them come in for a site plan approval or a special exception. Once you do any of those three things, you make that permanent, and I don't think we want to do that. So that's why the no enforcement policy through the, you know, executive orders, I think is the best way to do that. You know, nobody knows a finite date yet, but the date that we're hearing, restaurants might be able to open up fully, it's like a September 1st. So, you know, this may be through September 1st, but I don't think that we want to jump the gun and change our regs to allow for, you know, dining in a parking area, because that, now you've changed it permanently, or have someone come in to change their site plan, because now it's permanent. So I think that this is just the better, more reasonable, logical way to go.
All right. And I see Chris has his hand up. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I'd just be in favor of, you know, as long as that they can, you know, follow whatever the state is demanding of them and come in and talk to you, Robin. I don't think we, do we need to see all of these people? I don't think we meet often enough, and, you know, I think we can be more flexible with that and, you know, trust Robin and enforce the state regulations.
All right.
Probably, of course, that you can't enforce people. I mean, Dairy Serve set it up pretty well for social distancing, but people don't do what they're supposed to, and that's gonna be tough when all this starts happening.
So Robin, it sounds as though the commission's okay with you working with Jerry to make sure that, you know, that things don't get out of hand, and if you're not gonna enforce the, the ordinance until September 1st or thereabouts, unless the governor changes that. It sounds like that's kind of the direction. Do you need a motion for this, or are you, can you just go ahead with it?
Um, so I, I think I feel more comfortable if you guys made an official motion, just saying no enforcement action to be taken on restaurant outdoor dining during the course of this executive order from the governor.
All right. Is there a commission member that would like to make that motion?
We include something in the language that stresses the importance of just managing traffic flow. I, I can only picture what it would look like at Horseshoe Tavern with seating out front if they need to expand it in that parking lot.
Um, so I, maybe we can make the motion that we're not gonna take any enforcement action, provided that the business comes in and gets a review signed off on by the town planner prior to setting up.
Is that acceptable, Robin? Okay. All right. Go ahead, Matt.
I would say that's good. I like that.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Sure.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We got a second by Mike Fumiati. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I declare the motion passed. All right. And Robin, there was another issue, I understand, with gas price signage.
Yes. So we had an applicant come in who's looking to redo signage at one of the gas stations, and part of the proposal was for LED price signing, signage. And in reviewing our regs, we don't allow it, but of course, the two other gas stations in town already have it. So I had gone through the files when I was in town hall last Thursday. I'm not really there on a regular basis now, but I was there to do some research. So I looked that up, and we didn't have anything from zoning board of appeals, so I didn't see a variance. I didn't see how they were approved. They didn't seem to go through you guys. So, you know, we had told the gentleman, we, we don't allow it, obviously, because that's what our regs say. But Frank, as you know, when I reached out to you today, you said that was one thing Jeff was allowing. It's not in the regs, and if you guys want it in the regs, we need to put it in there. But I just, you know, I feel uncomfortable unless you guys want to direct Jerry to sign off on it, saying, Jerry, sign off on something that's technically not allowed by the regs, even though it was done in the past. So some direction from you guys would be really helpful.
So I can tell you that I did speak with, with Jeff about it, and because it was just the numerals, and it's an electronic changing of the, the digits, if you will, it wasn't, he didn't consider it internally lit, and it was for gas pricing, it was not for advertising or anything like that. But if you, if you'd like to, if you think, if your recommendation is that we craft language to put that in the, in the regs, then we should maybe look at that, at doing that. I think we want to be specific as to what we're allowing and what we're not if we're gonna do that, because we typically haven't allowed internally illuminated signs. And we have not normally allowed things like LEDs with switching different sign boards like you see at the high, on the highways and that kind of thing. But I guess I'll, I'll ask the commission members what their thoughts are. So Chris, you have your hand up?
No, that was, I just never put it down from before.
Oh, okay. All right. Any commission members, do you have any comments for Robin on that? Joe?
Yep. Frank, I guess as long as they're gonna be consistent with the digital portion of it for the pricing, I mean, if, if we've allowed the other two to do it, I think we should go ahead and allow them to do it.
Okay. Josh?
I don't have a view one way or the other, because I don't necessarily, I can't visualize what, what it is. Like, my comment is more around, you know, you guys, before I came on the commission, but worked on sign regulations, but there's so many things that are grandfathered in. Right now, it's very hard to know what is, like, what fits a current regulation versus what was grandfathered in. Right? And so I understand the internally lit sign. I also know that when, like, when Liberty Bank wanted to redo their signing, their signage, you know, they were saying, well, this is not really internally lit, because it's using new technology. Mostly, I, I think that we should just try to minimize the amount that we're deviating from, you know, our look and feel that we want through our corridor, because it is sort of part of our brand and part of the heart of our town. So I don't have necessarily a problem with the, like, LED signage, but I would think we should be very specific about what we're allowing there. Like, this makes some sense to me, it can be not obnoxious.
So what, as I understand it, just to make it clear, the, you know, there's LED signage that has like pictures and moving things and all that. This is not movement. There's no movement. It's a fixed number. It is changeable remotely, which is why they use it. In the old days, you used to send somebody up on a ladder to change the prices, and so they do it electronically now. But there's no animation, and it's not like, at least the ones that were installed at the other sites, was not like a tele, an iPad screen or something like that. It was actually, you know, discrete LEDs that, you know, it was a two, or it was a three, or it was a four. Robin, I, I think if, as long as they're willing to comply with, with basically what the other folks have in town, Joe, Joe makes the point that, you know, it's not an issue as far as consistency with that.
Yeah, that's what they were proposing. I, I saw the proposal, it is aligned with the other two gas stations.
But make sure they clearly understand that this is not to be misinterpreted.
Yep.
And certainly, they can't be animated, or blinking, or any other, you know, type movement.
Yep.
All right. Good point, Dick. Thank you. All right. Do you need that as a motion, Robin, or can you take care of that without it?
No, I think we're good without that.
Okay. Very good. All right. Under miscellaneous, do we have anything? If not, a motion would be in order, Dick.
I move to approve adjournment.
All right. A motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I declare the motion passed. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to our public for participating. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody. See you later.